September 16th, board meetings. Order and aims to back your heads for this assignment in silence for all the tragic accidents we have happened in the SLOC school of some change. Now if you please stand in the pledge of flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now additions to the agenda, your recommendations, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the agenda.
I have a motion to approve the agenda presented.
I make that motion.
That the second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Superintendent.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I'll ask you to look in your FYI folder, your board packet. You've got TSI, ATSI information there. If you have any questions about that. Also, an update, our support services staff has been helping out this week at our schools. They've been helping in the cafeteria, serving, cleaning, also doing some substitute teaching. We have a workforce shortage that we have in America right now. We've got some aides there. So our support service staff has been pitching in, been out there along with them. Our district office team is there helping in the schools during this time. Also, along those lines, on the substitute teaching, I'll be recommending for later today to raise sub bay to $100 a day for substitute teachers. So I'll be asking about it, consider that way today against the personnel report. At this time, we have a special group of students that we'd like to recognize. We have our superintendent's leadership council students who are here today. That's our S Y L C students. And we have parents and seniors from each of our schools that represent each of our eight high schools. We have various numbers, depending on how many people apply and then how their application looks. But we're very proud of this group. They do a great job of community service and being ambassadors.
Okay, alright.
I'd like to meet each of those students today. So at this time, I'll ask Mr. Amy Benson and Mr. Jeff Shands, our S Y L C sponsors, to come forward and start recognizing our students.
Alright, good morning, board.
Good morning.
Thank you for having us today. We are here to represent Superintendent's Leadership Council, and we are happy today to present them to you. And just want to take a moment to say thank you for your continued support of this program. Thank you to Mr. Austin for his leadership of this program. And thank you to Miss Samuels for her involvement with the program as well. And we have a very vibrant group of over 60 young people this year. This is a record number for the Superintendent's Leadership Council, and we are excited for the year. They are a wonderful, wonderful group. They represent the best of DeSoto County schools. And as you can imagine, it is hard to narrow it down because we have such wonderful students. So we are happy to present them to you. I will be reading the first four schools, and then this Benson will come and present the second four. So as we call on your name, if you'll just come forward and receive your certificate. Alexis Chin from Center Hill High School. Eva Kate Taylor. Ariadna Mendoza. Thomas Allen Sloan. We have a few that could not be with us this morning, but I will still read their names. Adrian Wareau from DeSoto Central. Bethany Walker from DeSoto Central. Okay, alright, I'll just get a picture of this. Okay, they're gonna take a picture of them. Let's get Mr. Shands and Ms. Benson a picture too. Ms. Benson. And parents, is your school calling him to come up? We're gonna recognize DeSoto Central, Bethany Walker. Aminana Vaz. Emily Smith. Easton Wumble. Spencer Harden. Honglin Sa. Now we'll recognize Fernando High School. Kennedy Eldridge. Rose Stafford. Peyton Williamson. Maddie Sanders. Eli Rogers. Addison Kirkendall. Sarah Flute. Catherine Bush. Jackson Hustleton. Ben Sarter. Alexandra Taylor. Anna Grace Crane. Sydney Gunther. Merrick Ludwig. The next group is representing Fort Blake High School. Ethan Trillet. Sydney Warren. Kanaya Hare. Lauren Moreno. Iliana Marchinger. Janelle Markwes.
Good morning, board. I'm new to this group, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to be a part of this wonderful group of students. So I'm gonna be presenting the last four schools. So we're gonna start, I'm gonna start with Lake Cormorant. Ms. Kira Allen. Marcella Odom. Camden Montgomery. Allison Nun. And Robert Price.
Can he give you one?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. Hey, he knows I'll work it.
Hi, our next school is Lewisburg. Hayes Karen. Anna Clark Bridges. Caroline Pappage. Jared Morris. Georgia Carter. Preston Shans. Bea Cashin. Samuel Overstreet. Amelia Bowers. Riley Littleton. Anna Catherine Wood. I'd also like to recognize Nella Love who did this. Our next school is Olive Branch. Samantha Harris. Justice Ratliff. Ben Peja Jones. Madeline Holmes. Malik Mitchell. DeKayla Taylor. I'd also like to recognize Grace Lee who did not be with us. Now I would like to recognize South Haven students. Madison Washington. Jordan Jackson. Ace Joplin. Connor Robertson. Brandon Sa.
That concludes our Superintendent's Leadership Council students. Y'all are welcome to hang around for our 53 items on the board. Have a good time together. And have safe ones.
Good luck.
Thank you. I'll have a good day.
Very nice words for me. I have attorney's report. Does the attorney have anything for us? He calls in. Thank you so much. Next item is the appropriate amendments for August 19th. If there are no corrections, do I have a motion to approve them, Mr. President?
Aye.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda, your recommendations, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the consent agenda.
Items A to D, D, D. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda, the agenda consent agenda?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we move on to new business. Mr. Williams, I think you have the floor.
I can dispel him off.
Did you bring water?
I'm good.
Bids for network power adapters.
Yes, ma'am, bids were also on the spectrum of a power adapter. My recommendation, that's a little bit of upper edge technology.
Recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the lowest vested upper edge technology network power adapters.
I have a motion to approve the network power adapter bid.
Aye.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Architectural Services Allen.
Yes, ma'am. We're requesting permission to enter into a contractual agreement with Allen Cultural for the architectural services for the board replacement project at Central Services.
Okay. Your recommendations, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve entering into a contractual agreement for the architectural services of Allen Cultural for the board replacements.
Motion for the board replacements.
Aye.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Permission to advertise for bids for the board replacements.
If they were to request permission to advertise for bids for the board replacement project at Central Services.
Recommendations, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve advertising for bids for the board replacements and services.
A motion to advertise.
Make that motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Architectural Services for the bus lot expansion at Fort Blake Elementary.
If they request permission to enter into a contractual agreement with Allen Cultural for architectural services for the bus lot expansion at Fort Blake Elementary.
Your recommendations, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the use of architectural services of Allen Cultural for the bus lot expansion at Fort Blake Elementary.
Do I have a motion for these architectural services?
I make that motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Permission to advertise for the bus lot expansion.
If they request permission to advertise for bids on the bus lot expansion at Fort Blake Elementary.
Your recommendations, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve advertising for bids for the bus lot expansion at Fort Blake Elementary.
Do I have a motion to approve the permission to advertise? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Architectural Services for the Allen Cultural Classroom Edition, Fernando Hills Elementary.
If they request permission from the board to enter into contractual agreement with Allen Cultural for the architectural services for the classroom edition at Fernando Hills Elementary.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve entering into a contractual agreement for architectural services of Allen Cultural Classroom Edition at Tango Village Elementary.
Do I have permission to advertise?
I make that motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Permission to advertise for bids for Fernando Hills Elementary.
If they were to request permission to advertise for bids on the A classroom edition at Fernando Hills Elementary.
Recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve advertising for bids for the classroom editions at Tango Village Elementary.
Do I have a motion to approve, to ad, or permission to advertise?
I make that motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Architectural Services Allen Cultural District Water Bottle Filling Project.
Yes, they were to request permission to enter into contractual agreement with Allen Cultural for architectural services for the District One Bottle Filling Project.
That's a math.
Aye.
Recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve entering into contractual agreement with Allen Cultural for the architectural services for the District One Bottle Filling Project.
I have a motion for this project.
Aye.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Permission to advertise for the water bottle in District One.
If they request permission to advertise for bids for the District One Bottle Filling Project.
Recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve advertising for bids for the District One Bottle Filling Project.
Do I have a motion for the, to advertise?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Architectural Services Allen, District Two, for the water.
Yes, ma'am. Request permission to enter into contractual agreement with Allen Cultural for about architectural services for District Two Bottle Filling Project.
Your recommendations, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve entering into contractual agreement with Allen Cultural for architectural services for District Two Bottle Filling Project.
And I need a motion to approve Allen Cultural for this project.
Aye.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Permission to advertise for bids for District Two Bottle Filling Project.
If they were to request permission to advertise for bids for the DCS District Two Bottle Filling Project.
Recommendations, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve advertising for bids for District Two Bottle Filling Project.
I have a motion to give permission to advertise for bids for this project.
Aye.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Architectural Services for the Allen Cultural District Three Bottle Filling Project.
If they request permission to enter into contractual agreement with Allen Cultural for about architectural services for District Three Water Bottle Filling Project.
Recommendations, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve entering into contractual agreement for the architectural services of Allen Cultural for the District Three Bottle Filling Project.
Motion to approve these services for, um...
Make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Permission to advertise for bids for District Three.
If they were to request permission to advertise for bids for the District Three Bottle Filling Project.
Recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve advertising for bids for the District Three Bottle Filling Project.
Do I have a motion to advertise for bids for District Three?
Aye.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Architectural Services Allen Cultural District Four.
If they were to request permission to enter into a contractual agreement with Allen Cultural for about architectural services for the District Four Bottle Filling Project.
Recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve entering into contractual agreement for architectural services of Allen Cultural for the District Four Bottle Filling Project.
Do I have a motion to give the architectural services for this pool?
I make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Permission to advertise for bids for the Bottle Filling Project. Permission to advertise for bids for the model filler project.
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission from the board to advertise for bids for the district four model building project.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve advertising for bids for the district four model building project.
Permission to advertise for bids for district two.
Oh, move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Architectural services for partial HVAC replacement at South Central.
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission from the board to enter into a contractual agreement with Alan Cultural for architectural services for South Central and North partial HVAC replacement project.
Recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve entering into contractual agreement with Alan Moschel for their architectural services for partial HVAC replacement at South Central.
Do I have a motion to engage these architectural services?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Permission to advertise for bids for South Central and North HVAC.
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission to advertise for bids for the, for, for, for partial HVAC replacement.
Recommendations, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve advertising for bids for partial HVAC replacement at South Central.
Do I have a motion to make for permission to advertise for these bids?
Oh, move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Architectural services for the HVAC at Greenberg Elementary.
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission to enter into a contractual agreement with Alan Cultural for spring for partial HVAC replacement.
Recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve entering into contractual agreement with Alan Moschel for architectural services for partial HVAC replacement at Greenberg Elementary.
Do I have a motion for the architectural services for partial replacement at Greenberg Elementary?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Permission to advertise for bids?
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission to advertise for bids for the spring for partial HVAC replacement.
Your recommendations?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the advertising for bids for partial HVAC replacement at Greenberg Elementary.
Motion to advertise for bids for partial replacement at Greenberg Elementary.
Make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Architectural services for partial replacement at Fernando Elementary.
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission to enter into a contractual agreement with Alan Cultural for architectural services for Fernando Elementary for partial HVAC replacement.
Recommendations, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve entering into contractual agreement with Alan Moschel for their architectural services for partial HVAC replacement at Fernando Elementary.
This motion for Alan Moschel for partial HVAC replacement at Fernando Elementary.
Make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Permission to advertise for bids in the, for partial HVAC replacement.
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission to advertise for bids for Fernando Elementary's partial HVAC replacement project.
Your recommendations?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the advertising for bids for partial HVAC replacement.
Do I have a motion for permission to advertise for the bids?
Oh, move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Architectural services for partial HVAC replacement at Horn Lake Elementary.
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission to enter into a contractual agreement with Alan Cultural for architectural services at Horn Lake Elementary for partial HVAC replacement.
Recommendations, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve entering into contractual agreement with Alan Moschel for their architectural services for the partial HVAC replacement at Horn Lake Elementary.
Do I have a motion for these architectural services for partial replacement at Horn Lake Elementary?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Permission to advertise for bids for partial replacement at Horn Lake Elementary.
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission to advertise for bids for the, for, 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 for.
Recommendations, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve advertising for bids for the partial HVAC replacement at Horn Lake Elementary.
Do I have a motion to advertise for bids for partial replacement at Horn Lake Elementary?
Oh, move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Architectural services for partial replacement at Horn Lake High School.
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission to enter into a contractual agreement with Alan Cultural for architectural services for Horn Lake High School partial HVAC replacement project.
Recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve entering into contractual agreement with Alan Moschel for their architectural services for partial HVAC replacement at Horn Lake Elementary.
Do I have a motion for Alan Moschel for partial replacement at Horn Lake High School? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Permission to advertise for bids?
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission to advertise for bids for the Horn Lake High School partial HVAC replacement project.
Recommendations, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the advertising for bids for partial HVAC replacement.
Do I have a motion for permission to advertise for Horn Lake High School?
Oh, move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Architectural services for partial replacement at Horn Lake Intermediate.
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission to enter into a contractual agreement with Alan Cultural for architectural services for the, for, for, for partial HVAC replacement.
Recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve contractual agreement with Alan Moschel for architectural services for the partial HVAC replacement at Horn Lake Elementary.
Do I have a motion to take these architectural services for, 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 for? Second.
Second.
All in favor? Permission to advertise for bids for, for, for?
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission to advertise for bids for the, for, 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 for.
Recommendations, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the advertising for bids for the partial HVAC replacement at Horn Lake Elementary.
Do I have a motion to advertise for bids?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Architectural services for Alan Moschel for partial, for, for, for Fernando Middle.
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission to enter into a contractual agreement with Alan Cultural for architectural services for Fernando Middle's partial HVAC replacement project.
Recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve entering into contractual agreement with Alan Moschel for their architectural services for partial HVAC replacement at Fernando Middle.
Do I have a motion for architectural services for Fernando Middle?
Oh, move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Permission to advertise for bids for Fernando Middle?
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission to advertise for bids for Fernando Middle's partial HVAC replacement.
Your recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve advertising for bids for partial HVAC replacement at Fernando Middle.
Do I have a motion to advertise for bids for Fernando Middle?
I make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Architectural services for, 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 for.
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission to enter into a contractual agreement with Alan Cultural for architectural services for Horn Lake Elementary for partial HVAC replacement.
Recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve entering into contractual agreement with Alan Moschel for their architectural services for partial HVAC replacement at Horn Lake Elementary.
Do I have a motion for these architectural services?
Make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Permission to advertise for partial replacement at Horn Lake Elementary.
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission to advertise for bids for the, for, 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 for.
Recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve advertising for bids for partial HVAC replacement.
Permission to advertise for bids for Lake County.
Oh, move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Architectural services for partial replacement at, at, at.
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission to enter into a contractual agreement with Alan Cultural for architectural services for Lewisburg High School partial HVAC replacement.
Recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve entering into contractual agreement with Alan Moschel for their architectural services for partial HVAC replacement at Lewisburg.
Do I have a motion for architectural services for partial replacement at Lewisburg High School?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Permission to advertise for bids for the, for?
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission to advertise for bids for, 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 for.
Recommendations, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the advertising for bids for partial HVAC replacement at Lewisburg.
Do I have a motion to advertise for bids for Lewisburg?
Oh, move.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Architectural services for, for, for.
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission to enter into a contractual agreement with Alan Cultural for architectural services for the, for, for, for.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve entering into contractual agreement with Alan Moschel for architectural services for partial HVAC replacement at Allen Branch Elementary.
Do I have a motion for Alan Moschel services for HVAC replacement at Allen Branch Elementary?
Oh, move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Permission to advertise for bids for HVAC.
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission to advertise for bids for the, for, for, for.
Recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve advertising for bids for partial HVAC replacement at Allen Branch Elementary.
Do I have a motion for permission to advertise for bids for Allen Branch Elementary?
Oh, move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Architectural services for partial replacement at Allen Branch High School.
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission to enter into a contractual agreement with Alan Cultural for architectural services for Allen Branch High School partial HVAC replacement.
Recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve entering into contractual agreement with Alan Moschel for their architectural services for the partial HVAC replacement at Allen Branch.
Do I have a motion for these architectural services at Allen Branch High School?
Oh, move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Permission to advertise for bids for Allen Branch?
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission to advertise for bids for Allen Branch High School partial HVAC replacement.
Recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the advertising for bids for partial HVAC replacement at Allen Branch.
Do I have a motion to advertise for bids for Allen Branch?
Oh, move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Architectural services for partial replacement at Allen Branch Middle.
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission to enter into a contractual agreement with Alan Cultural for architectural services for partial HVAC replacement at Allen Branch.
Your recommendations?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve entering into a contractual agreement with Alan Moschel for their architectural services for partial HVAC replacement at Allen Branch.
Do I have a motion for a contract with Alan Moschel filed at Allen Branch Middle? Do I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Permission to advertise for bids for cultural, cultural, cultural at Allen Branch Middle?
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission to advertise for bids for the, for, 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 for.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the advertising for bids for partial HVAC replacement at Allen Branch.
Do I have a motion to advertise for bids for Allen Branch?
Oh, move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Architectural services for partial replacement of places at Horn Lake Elementary.
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission from the board to enter into a contractual agreement with Alan Cultural for, 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 for Fernando Elementary's partial HVAC replacement.
Recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve entering into contractual agreement with Alan Moschel for their architectural services for partial HVAC replacement at Horn Lake Elementary.
Do I have a motion for architectural services for, for, for?
I make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Permission to advertise for partial HVAC replacement at Horn Lake Elementary?
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission to advertise for bids for the, for, for, for Fernando Middle's partial HVAC replacement.
Recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the advertising for bids for partial HVAC replacement at Horn Lake Elementary.
Do I have a motion? Permission to advertise for these bids?
Oh, move.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Architectural bid for Alan Moschel partial replacement at South Haven Intermediate?
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission to enter into a contractual agreement with Alan Cultural for, 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 for.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve entering into a contractual agreement with Alan Moschel for architectural services for partial HVAC replacement at South Haven Intermediate.
Do I have a motion to give these architectural services for South Haven Intermediate?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Permission to advertise for bids for partial replacement at South Haven Intermediate?
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission to advertise for bids for South Haven, South Haven Intermediate, partial HVAC replacement.
Recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the advertising for bids for partial HVAC replacement at South Haven Intermediate.
Do I have permission to advertise for bids for South Haven Intermediate?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Architectural services for partial replacement at Shadow Oaks Elementary.
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission to enter into a contractual agreement with Alan Cultural for the Shadow Oaks Elementary for partial HVAC replacement.
Recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve entering into contractual agreement with Alan Moschel for architectural services for partial HVAC replacement at Shadow Oaks.
Do I have a motion for permission to advertise? Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Permission to advertise for bids for Shadow Oaks?
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission to advertise for bids for Shadow Oaks Elementary for partial HVAC.
Recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve advertising for bids for partial HVAC replacement at Shadow Oaks.
Do I have a motion to advertise for bids for this partial replacement at Shadow Oaks Elementary?
I make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Architectural services for partial replacement at, at, at.
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission to enter into a contractual agreement with Alan Cultural for the law of elementary school partial HVAC replacement.
Your recommendations?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve entering into contractual agreement with Alan Moschel for architectural services for partial HVAC replacement at Horn Lake Elementary.
Do I have a motion to, 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 to?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Permission to advertise for bids for the, for, for?
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission to advertise for bids for all of those, for, for, for.
Recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the advertising for bids for partial HVAC replacement. Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the advertising for bids for the Archal HVAC replacement Wolf's.
Do you have a motion, a motion for permission to advertise for Wolf's Elementary?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Architectural Services for Playground Equipment improvement.
Yes ma'am, we request permission to enter into contractual agreement with Allen Cultural for their architectural services for playground equipment improvement throughout the year.
Your recommendation.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve entering into contractual agreement with Allen Cultural for their architectural services for playground improvement project.
Do I have a motion to approve the Architectural Services for Playground Improvement District?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Permission to advertise for bids for playground improvement.
Yes ma'am, we request permission to advertise for bids for playground equipment associated with the improvement project.
Recommendation, sir.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve advertising for bids for playground equipment improvement project.
Permission to advertise for playground for bids. Do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Architectural Services for Restroom Edition at South Haven Intermediate.
Yes ma'am, we request permission to enter into contractual agreement with Allen Cultural for the Restroom Edition at South Haven.
Your recommendation, sir.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve entering into a contractual agreement with Allen Cultural for their architectural services for Restroom Edition and South Haven Intermediate.
Do I have the services of Allen Cultural for the Restroom Edition at South Haven Intermediate?
Make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Permission to advertise for bids for the Restroom Edition.
Yes ma'am, we request permission to advertise for bids for the Restroom Edition at South Haven.
Your recommendation.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the advertising for bids for Restroom Edition at South Haven.
Do I have a motion to advertise for bids for the Restroom Edition?
I make that motion.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Requesting to reimburse the student who stole a cell phone at Allen Branch High School.
Ma'am, in the first of all, Allen Branch has questioned reimbursement of cell phones. So, from the cell phone category, they are no longer going to use the cell phone category for our conversation about the matter of the address of the school building, the school's permission to reimburse the student from the school's suite.
Your recommendation, sir.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the request to reimburse the student who stole a cell phone at Allen Branch High School.
Do I have a motion to approve this request to reimburse the student?
Aye.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
First name. It looks like it's around saying.
I didn't get to get up and skip a few wrong ones.
I don't think so.
Personnel, pages one through four would be recitation, pages five and seven would be personnel changes, page eight is what weeds and I've there's a suggested place today, page nine would be provision, page nine would be a memo from this, and the replacement when the condition to raise, page ten of Kelly would be pricing sheet, page eleven is a memo from the status, she was questioning that group or substitute narrative moved to inactive, and then she would replace those narrative, narrative that have the most flexible schedule, so they can cover each district, page twelve is a memo from the director of health and condition of the unit, that unit will be paid for with extra funds of a fifth one year, both with that unit, page thirteen is a memo from the director of child nutrition, on the way in purple, request to increase child nutrition assistance manager pay scale, this would be a once upon a time that then increased each year, page fourteen would be twenty-one, twenty-two child nutrition pay scale, page fifteen is a memo from the director of special education, she has an occupational therapist resigned, she requesting to place an addition with OT or certified OT therapy assistant, page sixteen is a memo from the special education director, transportation expenses, the E S Y program, the bus driver, but page seventeen is a memo from the director of special education, on the request for additional teacher units at Shadow Oak, but due to the recent student, page eighteen and nineteen would be a request for additional pay for the director of special education, bus driver, and age four summer eighth grade math camp, page twenty to twenty-one, additional pay for the director of program, teaching to work at the academy, as at school two for Omaha, pages twenty-two and twenty-three would be a request for additional pay for the director of other programs who works at that school two for Lake High School, at this point, I'm sorry, but if you get up and vote, excuse me, stop.
What was the last page?
Page twenty-two.
I'm going to read them.
Your recommendation, sir. Twenty-three pages.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve personnel as presented pages one through twenty-three.
Do I have a motion to your first name, one through twenty-three?
Aye.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I just want to call the recommendations for new employees to be hired as a projector tip will be paid for the data support scale and will begin on September the eighteenth.
Your recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve personnel as presented pages twenty-four.
I need a motion to this effect.
I make that motion.
Second.
Start the.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, of course, Mr. Page.
Mr. Page, we have student discipline, you want us to do a discipline, thank you, sir.
Yes.
Good job, Mrs. Page.
Yes, he loves. He did that.
Butter, butter, butter.
I need a motion to go into executive session for the student disciplines, and since the attorney has nothing for us, we can see student disciplines. All in favor?
Aye.
We want, our next meeting will be Thursday, October seventh, at three o'clock, Mr. Page will come back and inform you if we want to stay in executive session.